Good morning. Today is February 18th, 2015. It is now 10:01. We will be calling the county commission meeting to order. Call to order first is Commissioner Callen.
Here.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Here.
Good. And before we stand for a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag, I'd like to just remind everyone that today is the third year anniversary of the death of Sergeant Michael Todd May. This is a situation that was extremely unfortunate. And when we silently meditate, I request that we think of him and his family in our thoughts today.
Thank you. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Thank you. Number three is consent and approval.
Today we have five exonerations for years 2012, 13, and 14, and $4,715.85. Fiduciary orders of February 18th, and state no services for lip cream minutes of January 28th. And again, congratulations, you're all caught up now.
Yes, thank you very much.
General County Fund, $181,316.69. Purchasing card, $3,0279.21. Cole Severance Fund, $21,0973.37. Camp Muffley, $250. Mason Dixon Park, $590.55. Mason Dixon Park purchasing card, $5,808.79. Associates Valuation Fund, $1,0563.54. Home Containment Fund, $2,001.1295. Non-Employed Purchasing Card, $103.63, for a total of $216,998.73.
Move for approval.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, call for the roll. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, passes. At this time, we're moving forward, we have comments from the public. Anyone who would like to stand up and speak, if they could just stand up, state their name, their address, and any public comment will be accepted. We look forward to hearing from you. It is now open. And seeing that it isn't, it's closed. Okay, we'll move forward. Renetta and Grants, how much money are we gonna get?
Whatever you want.
Okay, oh, that sounds good.
Okay, a couple of reimbursement items today. Then we have one grant application. The first is the HUD grant for MEYSP, $919.02 for the month of January. The JAVG grant, also for January 2015, $2331.35.
Okay.
And the EvoCA grant for January, $4,087.32. Those are three items for reimbursement today.
How's the commission want to go?
To approve the reimbursements.
Second.
Some proper moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes.
We have one grant application today for the EvoCA grant for fiscal year 2016. They are requesting $71,458. And that project period would be October 1, 2015, through September 30, 2016. This is an annual grant application that we've submitted for many, many years, and we're just asking for the commission's approval on that today.
Move to approve the application.
Second.
Okay, if we're properly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Make sure we have everyone's name on here. Okay, great. Okay, we're now at Mr. Doyle, abandoned and dilapidated properties. Come on down.
Yeah. I don't know if Mr. Hawkins noticed how this works, but in our organization, our dilapidated properties, we send out a notice of violation and give them some time to do something. And if they don't do anything, we bring them back to the commission for a written from the commission that gives them 90 days, and then we start to find that this is on the River Road, that we can't get nothing done to do anything and to move. There's some pictures.
That's the one that the slide moved, didn't it? And that's the one that caused the slide, the River Road slide?
That's the one, yeah.
At the border, at the end of the section.
It's moving at its own free will. Right.
They should, they should have money to do that because they got a settlement.
Yes.
So we're at the complaint stage for the commission to send a formal complaint from the commission.
Move to submit the complaint as recommended by the abandoned dilapidated properties.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Key and Jay will speak.
Oh. Okay, let me write that down. Okay, we are now at moving quickly.
You said it was passed, I'm sorry.
Oh, I apologize, it does pass. Thank you. Okay, correspondence.
Okay, I have two requisitions for payment that are committed since we did the agenda in front of you.
Okay.
One is for Montview LLC, an amount of $4,515,000 from Series 2014 B taxable tip forms. This is to Canova Stone for work at the ballpark. And the second is requisition for payment number five for the 2014 taxable University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Ballpark project. This is in the amount of $2,341,578.15.
Okay. And how would you like to proceed?
Move to approve the reimbursements.
Second.
Been properly moved in second for both reimbursements. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes. Thank you very much. Are there any other correspondence?
We'll announce that the Black Bears, I gotta email this one.
Sure.
Are going to unveil their new team logo this afternoon at 2 o'clock at the Waterfront Place Hotel.
Okay, at the Montegia County State Ballpark.
Ballpark.
It's called the Montegia County Ballpark for now.
Very creative. You know, it took us hours.
I know, I believe that was one of those ones that really, we had to get a think tank going on.
I even had to get Dave Johnson's input on it, come up with some originality.
Okay.
He's back there, he's looking.
Yeah, he's back there.
Okay, number eight. Here we go. We have three items. There's a third item that I will add on as explanation on the unfinished business, but the first one will be courthouse security proposal. Do you have the specific, well, we have it in front of us, and also we have the sheriff here to answer any questions. And also, I believe what's in front of us, there is requested to be a, I don't want to say amendment because we haven't accepted yet, but a change in the draft. So who would like to speak to it?
Go ahead, Bill. I think we changed, what the main thing we're doing is we're adopting the new agreement that requires the attorneys to call, to call in to the sheriff's office. There's two numbers in the agreement. This is the latest, this is the update.
Agreement.
Okay, good.
With you.
My mouse started running for Diane, Diane, the paper. Here we go. Basically, we looked at this, we looked at this in two fashions. We started, we had very good discussion. You got to have, you got to really hash everything out and let people speak and really to come to what I consider a good resolution of any problem. If you cut people off, then you lose the benefit of other people's insights. So I was very pleased with our conversation and, well, I'll just leave it at that. Our conversation. Although we looked at it in three different groups, we decided in terms of security policies, we had adopted in two categories. One was when the public was present and what the security would be exercised when the public was present and when the public wasn't present. So in doing that, we adopted the sheriff's department's recommendation as presented for when the public was present. We changed the agreement, which previously said that as a courtesy, the attorneys that were going into the record room would call Gary White. We've now changed that, that they will call, as will all employees. Any employees that come in after hours will call one of two numbers that the sheriff has given us, 304-291-7290, or 304-291-7292. Now, when they, when they come in, they say where they're going, employee, attorney shouldn't go any place other than the record room, but you should still say I'm going to the record room, and an estimated time you're going to be there. Because we believe that, we believe that it's necessary the sheriff knows when they're going to be there. Now, that, that's just to give them an idea of when they're going to expect your call back. Because when you leave, you're going to call back and say, I left the courthouse, I secured the door, there's no one in the courthouse that I know, that I saw or I know of. And that, and that will be, that will be true for both employees and those attorneys that been, have been, received key card access under the terms of the county clerk, the clerk of the county commission. Whatever those terms are that she puts on in the record room will apply in addition to this key card access agreement. And this key card access agreement, in addition to be signed by the president, will also be signed by the clerk of the county commission, Carrie Blaney, the sheriff, and also Shannon Smith, is she the president of the Montegia County Bar now?
She is, but she has given me authority to sign in her status. She cannot attend this meeting today.
Okay, that's fine. So that this agreement should be with anyone that has key card access, they should have a copy of this along with the guidelines of, from the clerk.
And on behalf of the bar, we will make sure that that is circulated, and we're going to be making an announcement at the next bar meeting, just to reinforce the amendment to the existing agreement, so that everybody understands what's required.
Thank you. We appreciate that very much. So this is, this is, this is a plan. We're going to operate this, we're going to approve it for a 90-day period, not that it's not going to continue after 90 days, but prove it for a 90-day period and come back with another report at the end of 90 days from the sheriff, Gary White, and any, any other department heads or like officials. Also, we have what we want to do with this policy in order to evaluate, evaluate the concerns, security concerns of the lawyers, the public people coming in, as well as the employees and all. We're going to ask the sheriff to make the survey, continue that survey process that you had before. Is that acceptable, Sheriff Kizner?
Yes.
Okay, we just want you to continue that survey process, at least for another 90 days, after, 90 days after we start, start this. Now, the only question that I need from the sheriff, and probably Bobby, and Gary's here now, from the three of you, is if we pass this today, when can we, what's the implementation date that we can use? 23rd, or do we have to wait?
How long it would take to move the scanner, x-ray machine from the third floor down to the main entrance?
Could you do it safely, Bobby?
Yeah.
And the air phone is here.
And the air phone, we'd have to be a star to hand it here.
That's why I put it to the three of you. Can you give us a date that we should pass this for an effective date?
Probably looking at
March 1.
March 15.
March 15.
You can't make it by March 1. That's 10 days.
I can do it by March 1.
Can you do by March 1?
Okay.
As long as you have air phones installed.
I can guarantee the air phones can be installed, but
But we'll work on the, yeah. We'll set up a second system so we have that, so.
Can you do some backup temporarily if?
We'll make it work.
We'll make it work.
I just, I'd just rather go ahead and do it if we can get it done by March 1. I don't want to be too burdensome, but I would like to get it done.
Main entrance, as long as they can move the equipment down and it's operational, that's not a problem. The only issue we have is that the air phones, accessibility points, then we'll be fine. If not, we'll, we'll just have those monitored on a regular basis.
And, and, okay, so we'll make this effective March 1, and I need to also
Second.
Yes, Diane, you have an issue?
I, I just feel that I need to pass on some comments from Carrie. She's at a meeting in Washington DC today.
Okay.
I wanted to make the meeting, so I didn't want these to go unnoticed.
Thank you. Okay, I'll be happy to read it in my address.
I need Natalie's name on the record.
Okay, Natalie, you want to give your name for the record and address the name?
Yes, Natalie Sal.
S A L.
S A L.
She's representing the Montegia County Bar, I think.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Natalie.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll, I'll read these and I'll address them, and then the other commissioner can address them too. She says, here are a few of her concerns. She doesn't agree with the policy and procedures for many reasons. One, it serves no purpose to call the sheriff's office to let them know who's in the building, as they cannot see any cameras in the courthouse. The policy should be to call if there's a problem, or if someone in the building, they have to rise fierce for their safety. Well, I totally disagree. One of the most important thing in a, an empty building, and that's the way it was done in Washington DC, and that's the way it was done in the military. One of the, is, is person that's walking guard is not aware that someone's authorized is in the building, you see someone walking around in there, and I walked guard before as officer of the day and stuff, and when they didn't notify me as an officer of day that they were going to be in that building, I entered that building with my gun drawn, on the employees and on the lawyers. That's why you call the sheriff department, because in case they see or hear anything, they know that someone in here that's authorized. Otherwise, if they, if something goes off or something goes wrong, they would, and rightfully so, enter the building with guns drawn. The issue of non-employees or non-attorneys that have key access, such as janitors and vendors, has not been addressed. Well, I think, I think we have, maybe that, have we not, have we not addressed non-employees or non-attorneys who has key access?
The cleaning company.
Well, you're gonna have to
Well, they, they will function as employees, will they not, or?
Yes.
Or how, do we need to have a different category, or, as she suggested?
Well, I don't think so, only because, I mean, they are technically our employees, and they're hired and we're monitored because that's the whole concept and reason why we have them. So I think that's a, I don't think that even needs to be addressed. I think that's
I mean, they're here from 5 o'clock in the evening till
Till they finish.
At night, 1 o'clock.
Yeah.
Till 1 o'clock?
And that's what they're hired and contracted for, and that's exactly what, I don't see a problem with that at this time.
And we know they're here.
And you know that they're here. So you know that they're here, because that's their contract. Yeah. So I don't see that's a need. They've already stated why they're going to be here. So I think that's a non-issue.
Yeah, I don't see whether it's any difference if it's non-employees or contract employees. They're both employees.
Exactly.
Okay, the policy only refers to the courthouse, so there are different policies for the sheriff's building and the ward's building.
I'll, I'll address that. I, I found out there was a question or concern about coming out the side exit. What we learned, though, was that even though a person could come in, that second door is already locked, so the people can't get in there. So you're talking apples and oranges there. They're not, it's the same exact
Right.
Situation. I did not realize at the time that there was a second indoor lock, something that we don't have here. So
And you're talking about magistrate court?
Magistrate court.
And actually, if you remember when, excuse me, last week, Judge Giselle asked that we have everybody, the employees coming in one entry.
Yes, so that, so we agreed to that. That was one of the compromises.
Well, and that was, and that's key, that we don't have here in this building, is that the fact that if you exit that first door on the top, it locks, you can't get back in.
Exactly.
So the only way you can go is outside.
Right.
And there's, and also, there's an officer in the hallway anyway.
Right.
So just for that fact.
Okay, so that takes care of that problem.
That, that's, employee access to courthouse after hours is a responsibility elected official they work for. Access to the record room by attorneys, employees is under her authority. No, it is not. It's under the county commission's authority. She's the clerk of the county commission. It is not under her authority. Yes, the elected officials, they have certain authority, but under the, under the authority is to operate their office. It is clear, I don't care who says otherwise, it has been held up numerous times, that the county commission controls the building and access to the buildings and how the buildings are utilized. No elected official, judge, or clerk, or anyone else has the authority other than this, these three people right here. They control all the buildings, and the buildings belong to them. And how else to say?
I would just even like to put icing on the cake of what you said. What we are trying to do as the county commission is, we are statutory in charge of this building. We've explained that to the judges, they now understand it. We're going to explain it to every other person who has an office in here. Yes, they are in charge of their office, but to get to their office, they have to come in our building, and we want to uniform it and make it secure. Next.
She would agree with one entrance for the public, but not limit the employee to one entrance. Well, that was debated a lot and discussed a lot. We had a very good discussion. Understand from Gary White and both chiefs and the sheriff as to their rationale, and I am willing to accept their rationale. We'll go for a 90-day period, and we'll come back and revisit it. We'll see it from there. So that's the way I'd answer that one.
And that is also why we're going to have the surveys, because I believe it'd be very important to see what the employees say. If we hear from the employees and there's a disruption or a problem, we may come back before the 90 days. But this is why we're going to have the surveys, but for the 90 days is what we're planning to do.
Carrie will operate the same as in the past. She believes the key card logs are sufficient to determine who was here and when. The cameras are sufficient to determine exactly what went on when they are here. It was a camera in her office allowed the sheriff to identify the person who worked in the courthouse in 2013. We heard that.
We appreciate that she'll, she'll be able to operate, and we will too. But times have changed, and I think what we, the three county commissioners, are trying to do is uniform this for everyone, make it safe, but also deal with the ingress and egress. And that's what we're going to look at, at this time.
So, you know, I think we've addressed those.
Yes.
And I would, I would move that we adopt the security policies and procedures as I just outlined, and the agreement with the attorneys, that we authorize the president to sign those, that we, effective date of the implementation is March 1, that a survey will continue for the 90 days after it's been opened, be readily available for people to submit responses, and that we get an update within 90, within 90 days, less than the end of the 90-day period, and revisit this on a work session.
I'm very happy to see the spirit of compromise that has been exhibited in the room, and halfway will second this motion.
It's been properly moved in second, and just so we clarify, on the document that we have, that I first, we had first gotten attorney access after regular business hours, that is being taken out, we're putting the contract in there. That's, that, we're just putting what you have, so, and taking out what was in here. So it's exactly what you're requesting.
It's a new one.
It's what you're requesting.
That's fine.
We just have to do it this way, okay? So with everyone at that understanding that we're just basically accepting the agreement now and adding it to this actual policy.
It's all, it's all one thing.
Yes.
The agreement is, becomes a part of the policy. Yes.
And I, I would just simply ask that it be clarified that this is an amended agreement. The agreement has been in place since last year.
That, that's fine. I, I think I said that, but I'll
That's fine.
Add, add that. Yes, it's, it's an amended agreement, but it's a new agreement, because we didn't just put an amendment in it, we added, we added that, that provision. So however you want to say it, I, I agree.
It's been properly, it's been properly moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, it passes 3:0. I did say that I would like, not as part of this, but I just want it on the record, so in case the three of us are never here, that this can be reviewed and looked at by either party if circumstances cause it to happen. So I just want that on the record, so we don't feel that this is forever. And that way, I want that real clarification.
And if I may.
Sure.
This, I think it's all right to share, it was based upon a, an email conversation that Commissioner Bloom and I had, where we expressed that anytime you have a contract, if all parties are aware that there is an issue, all parties do have the right to bring it up and discuss whether or not that contract could be changed with the agreement of all parties.
And that's correct, and I didn't realize that. So that's why I just wanted to have that in there. Thank you very much for explaining that. Okay. With that being done, okay, the next issue, I believe, is probably recycling. Okay, I have before the county commissioners some information I'd like to read and share. Yes.
Sheriff.
Okay. Okay. I am pleased to inform the commissioners that a plan for recycling will begin this Saturday, February 21st, from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the Walmart parking lot off Hornbeck Road. We will be located at the same spot every first and third Saturday of the month until July 1. People may bring their single-stream recyclables and drop them off quickly, or they will be able to park the car and walk the items over to the bins. We will use three 30-yard roll-offs on a rotating basis that will be available for the community. As one roll-off is filled, Republic will immediately take it to the transfer station. This process will give Republic the time to switch bins while leaving enough capacity as customers come in. A crucial part of our program will be to end the program at 11 o'clock, thereby removing the last roll-off box to eliminate overflow or litter lying around. The cost of this program will be $300 per container, per dump, plus 5.34% fuel fee. At this time, we might need to pay one worker for four hours. We don't need to at this time, but that may happen. We believe that we will dump three or four times per day. This will still be lower than the $3,000 a month we would have spent on the prior contract. It will also be very important to collect data at this time. In this way, we will be able to assess which area or subdivisions and developments are involved in the process. I've designed a spreadsheet to be used by our workers to verify what part of the county they live in. That's the second sheet attached. I'm hoping that the Solid Waste Authority will become involved, and I will make a recommendation that they develop a plan to continue, promote, and revise this program as needed. I will also recommend a citizens advisory group to be formed to work with the Solid Waste Authority, who we are meeting today in the afternoon. The data will be used to work with the Solid Waste Authority and Republic Services to develop a future recycling program and meet the needs of our citizens. And finally, to the citizens of Montegia County, I speak for my other two commissioners, that we are adamant on having a successful recycling program in our county. We are setting the framework to have a viable program, but we want and need your support. Please work with us, and if you have recommendations or suggestions, to call us, the Solid Waste Authority. And thank you. And just so the people can see, the second sheet is a very simple checkoff, because we don't have any data, and this will be good for us to know what areas are recycling for when people say, maybe we might want to consider moving the roll-offs into another area of the county. The third page, and I again want to thank Diane for putting this on. This comes off of the page from Morgantown that shows acceptable items and unacceptable items. And I really want to personally thank Anthony Jambroni and the president of Westover, who, the president, the mayor, see, the mayor, who has been really working hard with us to get this program going, and also to make it very clear that Westover is open during the weekdays from, what are the times?
7 to 3:30.
7 to 3:30. So if people can't make it on Saturdays, they can still make it there, and it is single stream. So I'd like to offer this as a program, and what we have before me, I was just given by Anthony Jambroni, is an actual customer server, service contract that basically explains what we said. Is there any questions that you want to add to it? And I would ask that you'd allow me, authorize me to sign this, so we could try this for, you can have it, for the period up until July 1. And in the interim, we'll be working with the Solid Waste Authority to hopefully have them take this over and move forward. Any questions or discussion?
Is there a, is there a max charge, or are you, or are you just going to play it by your?
We'll play, roughly, we believe it's three or four, should be three or four bins per time, which works out to around, so 1,200, say with gas. per time, which works out to around, so twelve hundred, say with gas might be thirteen, fourteen hundred, and then, uh, if we do it twice. I don't believe we're going to do four bins each time. I think we will in the beginning because everyone's going to be dropping.
Been, been holding it for.
Yes.
Okay, so that's your, that's your estimate?
Yeah, that's what, that our estimate is, and that's what the estimate they came up with.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. So, yes.
Probably isn't a good time to bring this up, but there are going to be public hearings on rate increases for.
No, I think, yeah, let's bring that up as the second, bring that up as a second topic, yes, because that doesn't include recycling. Um, there is only one thing that I'm going to ask beyond that contract that I just thought about. We need to make sure that they're covered. I believe they have to be covered.
Covered how?
I mean, when they take it to the transfer.
They need, they need to have tarps or.
Tarp or something, just so it's covered.
They may have them on a truck, I'm not sure how they work that. That would be a question I asked.
We just want to make sure when they take it to the transfer station, so it doesn't blow all over the place.
Well, that, that's a good question. I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah.
When they, when people bring their recyclings in, I think by the law, you could not accept recyclings unless they, if they're bringing them into the pickup truck unless they're covered.
Right. Right. So, uh, so I just want to make sure.
We need to emphasize that. If anyone bring their recycling in, if they don't have it in a closed van or car, they're bringing it in a pickup truck. They have to be covered because it'll, it can be illegal for us to accept it. Is that all right, Jimmy?
Well, if it's secured, it can be secured in bags or however they do it, long they're not blown out all over the place. They can't be loose.
It can't, it can't be.
If it must be loose, it has to be covered at that point. They could be secured then.
Right. So that, that's, uh, that's a good point.
Okay, so if we would accept this with addition that it needs, there need to be covered, there needs to be some sort of covering or wrap.
When they transport it, but they may have an automatic cover.
Exactly. I think they do.
I think they do too, but I'm, I'm not sure.
Is that, is this terminable?
We can add it anywhere if you want to just.
No, no, I just wanted to see if, if they're, if they have a term or is this just, uh, this is just.
Well, we told them.
This is just like an invoice, okay?
And we told them we were only going to do this till the end of June. And that is, and we will also verify that.
Well, it appears that you might be able to terminate if there was some major problem.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Each, each person can terminate.
Yes, mayor.
I say one thing to address with, uh, Elton, about the, uh, covered loads. We have, we had to put an ordinance in place in Western to, uh, be able to enforce fines for people driving down the road without the loads covered. And before, they wouldn't accept you at the transfer station for garbage and stuff like that if you came in with a truck that was, that wasn't covered.
Right.
So I don't know if that is an ordinance or a law in the entire county or not.
It's state law.
The city of Morgantown.
It's state law. And see, and see, in reci- in the sense of recycling, you were accepting that. Now, I'd have to go back and look the law, look, look at the law for sure, but, uh, and that it, whether it would or would not apply. But whether it would or would not apply, I still think it's a good policy for the commission saying if you're going to bring, if you're going to bring a load of cardboard or plastics or whatever in a pickup truck and it's flying loose, we're not going to accept it. You got to abide by the law. The law is that you must, and that's statewide law, you must have your load covered, you can't travel. So how they enforced it was, was any of these, any of these recyclers or solid waste people, they were, it was illegal for them to accept it. They could be fined if they accepted a load that was not covered. So what I'm saying is, I don't know if the law specifically applies to us, but I think as a policy, we are not enforceable.
Okay, that, and that's fine. We'll just add that.
With the garbage as well, because before they put the transfer station where it's at now, we didn't have a, much of a problem police in that area, but now we do maybe three or four times a year, we have to go send our guys along the road to pick up the garbage that blows off even the garbage trucks.
Right.
And some of the, and not just recycle.
Right.
And that would be something that I would think that, uh, would be hopefully enforceable throughout the whole county.
That's a state law. Yeah, that's a state law. You could, if you can catch them, you could.
Yeah.
And they, they told me one time before too at the transfer station that if somebody came there and didn't have the load tarp, that they would just scold them, but accept it anyhow because their theory was they didn't want to turn them back out. Send them down with them.
And they throw it off the side, yeah.
So that is an issue and that, that is a problem.
Okay.
That does create a problem.
Okay.
Uh, I would move that we authorize the presidents to sign the, this agreement, um, that with the terms and that he mo- monitor the, the cost so it doesn't get excessive.
Second.
It's been promptly moved and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. I, I think this is another great move by the county commission working together and trying to resolve some issues in the county. This is another partnership for.
If I may, before you move on to another subject, I, I want to commend the Dominion Post, uh, and Ben, I don't know if you wrote that editorial, but it sounded like you. It was an exception, it was an exceptional, concise editorial of the true situation.
Yes.
Uh, and I, when I read that, I, I was like, this has to be my man, Ben. He has got his stuff down. He really knows what he's doing. So, so I want to thank the Dominion Post and especially Ben Conley. We, we really appreciate having you here. You do an excellent job. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Uh, part two of the issue is what, uh, Diane has just brought up. There has been a request for a forty-four percent increase and what I did not realize till I heard on the radio was this does not include the citizens of Morgantown.
That's, I kept wondering, my mind was coming, mine never came.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little shocked on that. So it's not for the citizens of Morgantown, it's only for the county, the outline area, Marion County, Harris County, and I did not realize that until that was mentioned on the radio. It does say here that the rate increase, you know, and also I believe it's going to be negotiable for businesses, what that means, but. So I don't know if, if you want to discuss, if anyone wants to talk about that, Montegay County, basically the rate would go, I'll just give you an idea, from thirteen dollars and sixty-two cents for a residential to nineteen dollars and sixty-six cents for residential. And I want to get it very clear, this does not include recycling. This is just a separate contract for them. So I will throw that out to, if any of the county commissioners want to comment on that.
Does that just come to a public?
Yes.
You know, it is going.
It'd be a public hearing, is that not correct?
Right.
They haven't.
It sits on the back.
It is unfortunate, however, that it does not address recycling.
Right.
In my opinion.
I, I, I agree. I, I, I think that we, we should attend or at least have a representative at each one of these hearings. I would very much want to know as to how they justify that rate increase. I have not, I don't know. I've been sort of waiting for, some people said, well, why don't you know about it? Why don't you know? Well, I didn't realize why I didn't know about it because I lived in the city of Morgantown, they didn't tell us.
And the letter actually just came, I believe, two days ago to me personally as a county resident outside the city limits.
Would we be able to post, I see the last, on the, on this page in the back, it says, anyone desiring to protest or intervene should file written protests or notice prior to April second, failure to, you know, then explains all the protests and where it's at. Do you think we could put that on the website? Would we be allowed to be put that on the website? Or if anyone has a question, I'm sorry.
We could do that, I, but, uh, I would like to do a little bit more than that.
Sure.
If we could discuss it.
No, go right ahead.
I, I don't know, I, I don't want to do, I'm so bogged down in legislature, but, but, uh, if, if one of the two commissioners here would be willing to accept an authorization from this commission to look into the justification of this and, and determine whether we should, whether we should adopt positions, whether we should present information at the public hearing, whether we should intervene, whatever, uh, I, I would be willing to make that motion if one of, if one of you two would accept it. I, I don't have to.
Are you interested?
I have no wrong with the votes.
Great, I, I, I appreciate you doing it.
I then move that we authorize Commissioner Hawkins to look into this rate increase to determine and come back with recommendations of the kind of things that we should do and positions we should take from this rate increase. And, uh, and encourage, as he already suggested, the idea of trying to, uh, including, second in this project.
I'll second that. It's been promptly moved and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Good. And I think the public will also be pleased that we are looking into that too.
Mr. President, also, that's only for their permit. That doesn't include like anybody else's go, that's handling garbage outside of their permit.
Oh, it's only the public's.
It's only the public's permit.
And there's eight different companies, I think we were told, in Mont County. So this is just one of these.
Yeah, it doesn't include.
But they are a major carrier.
But they are one of the major carriers.
That would impact probably about eighty percent of the county's.
Right. But they're probably far up front, and he just brought up the western end of the county because they're.
Right.
They won't be included.
The other, is there anything else on recycling or products before we move on to the next? Okay, thank you. I did add an extra unfinished business. I would like to present the possibility for the county commissioners. When we met and discussed the four H contract, we had given them the option of whether they wanted to do their own food or use the service we were going to provide them with. We put out the bids and we got a very good bid, much less than we had last year. In the discussions of, uh, what they were going to do, they first thought and said that it was a little too much to come up with the additional funds to do the, uh, use our food service, whereby would cause some problems with us and, and our program. And without getting a lot of detail, what we were trying to do for the first year is to uniform the food service program. If they were not to use it, then we would have to found some other individuals for the other con, the other weeks, which probably would have been a lot more than what we have here. In talking with them, they have come up, we have worked together, and one thing I like about this commission is, uh, we deal in partnerships and compromises. And what they have found out roughly is if we use, they said that it was roughly five thousand six hundred and fifty dollars more for each camp, for two hundred and fifty individuals, that they would not be able to come up with the cost. Considering the options that we have, only one food bid on one food to continue the program and to see if it would really work, it works out roughly to around twelve thousand three hundred and sixty dollars for two camps. What I'd like to propose as a compromise is that we would pick up the ten thousand dollars at this time for one year only. They would pick up, the four Hs will pick up, the states that they would, pick up the difference of two thousand three hundred and sixty dollars, five, whatever that major difference was. But they also were willing to offer a program to us, which would, a marketing program for that, um, uh, park and work with the superintendent to go out and try and bring in other camps or programs on a twelve month basis. So they're not only going to pay, but they're willing to work with us to promote the camp. So what I would like to do with your permission is say that this is a one year time that we're going to do, that we would then be able to use the services of the individual who applied for the food service. It would make it uniform and we could see how it works. The disruption of having several different ones would be a real nightmare. And I really think this is a positive step for helping four H out. It's a positive step for this county and I'd like to throw it out to either of you two to discuss it.
I'm more than happy to, you know, say that this is really a, a good thing. Uh, the only thing that was disappointing was that there was only one bid.
Right.
And obviously, uh, but knowing the people who made the bid and looking at the bid, I do believe it to be very fair. So I would move that we accept and subsidize for one year.
Right.
This amount.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been promptly moved and second, and I want to make sure very clearly, it's only for a one year period. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. Okay, good. Three oh. Thank you very much. Again, I, I can't say enough about this commission. I, I just want to keep saying that the three of us are, have really unique personalities and come from different avenues, but when it comes down to really doing what's best for the county, we, we pull it all together. So I want to thank the two of you. Let's go to new business. Oh, wow. Setting public hearing for the equalization of nine one one fees for landlines and how is.
Michael. How's the snow going?
Yes.
Well, we shouldn't be getting snow here this afternoon, but, uh, not a lot. Uh, I met with you before, we've, we've discussed for the past, uh, two years, uh, the need to, uh, increase the nine one one fee and that's for landline, um, fees, uh, in the county. Couple of weeks ago, I proposed to you, uh, and gave you, uh, statistical data that we've lost over two thousand landline phones in the past year, um, which obviously is detrimental to, to our, um, to our budget. We have in record history, um, never raised the current landline fee, which is a dollar thirty-one. Most other counties, um, if not ninety-five percent of the counties have done so, uh, and sometimes two and three times, um, since that has been inceptioned. So we also, uh, I think it's important to note that we receive no other type of funding other than what the county commission has done for us this past year to help subsidize, uh, the loss that we've had. We received no other funding except for landline and cellular, um, nine one one fees. Currently, right now, uh, there is, uh, I serve on the legislative, um, committee for, uh, the statewide nine one one, and there's two, um, bills that has been introduced in the past two weeks that you should be aware of. One of those was introduced yesterday in the Senate, which is Senate Bill five zero four. Uh, it was introduced by Canawha County, uh, and it is requesting, um, that an additional dollar, um, be permitted to, uh, be added to the wireless fee per county. So right now, wireless nine one one fees that you pay on your cell phone, if you're a Montegay County resident, your three dollar cellphone fee does not come directly back to nine one one in Montegay County. It goes to the state of West Virginia. The state then divides it up between the West Virginia State Police, uh, the West Virginia Interruptible Radio Project, Homeland Security Initiatives, and then it is divvied out, uh, based on the, you know, schematics of, uh, population and, um, a, um, formula that they have.
Yeah, they have area.
Correct. Uh, the only thing that comes directly back to the county, uh, that the county commission has control over is the landline, uh, fees. So that is a plus to us if that is passed, that use the commission will have the opportunity to decide whether you want to add an additional dollar, which would raise wireless fees to four dollars. And that one dollar, it would be the responsibility of the cellphone provider to ensure that that money comes directly back to the county, not into that formulated process through the state. The other area of concern, uh, that you all, uh, had met during the County Commission Association meeting, uh, was the, um, interrivable radio system. Uh, the negotiations in where to place it is, uh, the state DHHR has given up, uh, that program. And as important as it is, uh, to the state, uh, the West Virginia State Police was seeking to adopt that. There was some discussion and concern that once they adopted that, that that would open up the wireless nine one one fees, uh, to further, um, uh, support, uh, the West Virginia State Police and not all of the agencies who are on this radio project. We as nine one, as the state nine one one council, um, wrote legislation and it was introduced, uh, Senate Bill four ninety-six and House Bill twenty-seven eighty-five, uh, which right now has an overwhelming, uh, support in the Senate, uh, to place that program under the, uh, Division of Homeland Security Emergency Management, uh, which ensures that there would be no extra funding taken out of that program. There is, uh, growing, it was just introduced in the House, there was growing support and delicate, Stabler called me last night and, uh, I know that he is in support and we talked and uh I know that he is in support, and we talked to our other delegates. Um, and and all major uh counties in the state, uh actually all of the counties in the state as far as nine one one, the Homeland Security Initiatives, County Commission Association, the Sheriff's Deputy Sheriff's Association have all uh sent um letters of support to them to do that. So I wanna uh be clear that the the increase of the landline nine one one fee here in Montague County cannot be touched whether something would happen to that um program or not if it does not get there. But it is absolutely uh necessary. One of the other things uh that has come up is um West Virginia University, for instance. Um, some counties uh charge a residential uh landline fee and a commercial landline fee. Um, personally, and and what I've given to you is that, you know, I don't necessarily support that. I don't think that that's fair or equal to anyone.
A lot is a lot.
Yeah.
Right. So uh one of the things um the university did was they used to have the hardline um phones. They switched to the voiceover internet phones, uh which has changed a little bit in how we receive that income. Uh, from theirs, they're now considered a business class, so it's not every, when you're looking at your business, you don't look at the sheriff's department and say you've got twenty-five lines in here, you get a fee from each of those lines.
So the internet, internet phones are not?
Internet phone, voiceover internet, you are still charged uh
A landline fee?
That that landline fee, you still get the three dollars.
How about cable, is that?
Yeah, yeah, all landline fees, and I'm sorry, I misspoke, it's a dollar thirty one, all. If if you have a house phone, nothing that, not a cellphone, so um it is still considered part of that.
What about, what about that one that connects to your cellphone?
Uh, everything, everything is charged except for the track phones. The track phones, it has a prepaid um that you can go out and buy the minutes for. You're charged a uh two or three percent when you purchase the phone, and then there is no uh fee on your cellular. But again, that's a, that would be a cellular fee, not a landline.
That's a cellular fee, but I'm I'm, so it basically is, is anything that's hardware?
Correct, yes. Anything that you would use at home, um that you can take with you. We have approximately fifty-two thousand in total, that's uh frontier customers and um the voiceover internet and Comcast.
How does that compare to, when you presented this, what, four years ago to us?
Much larger.
Uh, do you have an idea how much we went down?
Um, not, not from um probably four years ago when we first discussed this, just the last two years uh we've lost. Well, actually, i- is around about ballpark, there was around fifty-eight thousand, I believe, when we first started looking at it, and now we're down to fifty-two.
Fifty-two, okay, so about ten, over ten percent.
Right.
Yeah.
Fifteen, sixteen percent.
Right. And because of that, I mean, we also have to look at the uh the increase, two major increases is one, the need to uh provide uh this next generation nine one one service to the community, uh which is the texting, um the chats, that type of thing. Everything needs to be upgraded to be able to support that. Uh, and then also our maintenance contract agreements for the equipment. Uh, just for instance, our phone equipment, uh which is completely antiquated, uh cannot be, we, the maintenance contract that that is on it rose ten thousand dollars from last year, from the thirteen year to the fourteen year.
Do you have a uh a proposal or or a uh something that we could submit out to the public to get them out to, so that people knows what we're gonna be talking about before the public hearing that we can distribute?
I have a uh a full documentation, uh uh, I don't wanna say full document, but an easy um proposal that shows uh uh the increases that we've had, uh what uh what the money is gonna be used for, where the money that we get now comes from, and shows that equalization of the three dollars.
And what your recommendation, and is that, is that increase tied to, tied to the, to these projects that you're working on?
Yes.
And you're showing all that?
Yes, correct.
Is that, is that ready for distribution to the media yet, or?
Um, I can have it within the week, or about in a week.
Alright. I I would just like to see if people get it before the public hearing, so they don't come in and have something to talk about.
Do you have a certain time date since, yeah, you're looking like a week to at least get that ready, so we at least need probably another week after that.
Well, I want, I want, people have time to digest it, so I'd say about three weeks from now.
Okay.
Does that work for you, Michael?
March twenty-fifth, March twenty-fifth?
March twenty-fifth.
Ten thirty A M.
You're good.
I move that we set a public hearing for equalization of nine one one fee for landlines to March twenty-fifth at?
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty A M.
Second.
So we've probably moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes. I have one specific question for you. You said the one dollar extra wireless, how are, how are they gonna do that for the twenty-five thousand students that come from out of state? So we won't be getting that?
No, it'll be for the customer who's registered in Montague County with with her address here. Uh, and that's something else that we're, that we're dealing with right now, with the uh voiceover internet phones. Uh, these companies, if if you live on the Marion County, Taylor County, Preston County line, uh your, your mailing address, because your mail comes out of that post office in the other county, uh where some of those fees could be misconstrued and go to another county that's coming here. So we're trying to ensure that they have some way to make sure that that comes back to to the rightful county.
One final question, with, when you come back, because we have to go to that nine one one enhancement, are you in negotiations with WVU because I think the three of us are very concerned that, you know, you have thirty thousand people, students who are getting the benefit from the others that are paying it here, especially on a nine one one, that we need to work out some sort of a compromise funding?
I've had one meeting so far with Chief Roberts, uh and um Captain Scott from there, and and we are then planning a another meeting not only with uh the sheriff uh and the other law enforcement chiefs to to get a collaboration together, uh but then with um Mr. Justice uh first with the university to see if we can work out.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the difficulty in case the media is not aware of this, that most, anyone, anyone that has a cellphone, there's twenty-five thousand students or whatever, there's, if they didn't buy their cellphone and money at county, you don't need a penny. And and well, and majority of them is Pennsylvania, New Jersey, New York.
Right.
That's where their cellphone, that's where their cellular fee goes, it doesn't come to us, so, so that's what, that's what President Bloom was referring to.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, lease agreement for extension office, we have before us the agreement?
This is an agreement that's been in place, the rental of the extension office um in Westover. However, the, the name on the lease, the person who signed for it was not a member of the commission.
Right.
So we're asking that this lease be re-signed by this current commission and be in effect on a fiscal year basis at the rate of forty-eight thousand six hundred dollars per year. Uh, due and payable first day of each month for one year term, the minimum annual rent shall be increased each year by two percent.
This is a prime example of why you cannot have ten or fifteen minute meetings. This is a prime example of rogue commissioners gone out and violating the way the law is set up for commissions to operate. Commissioner told that person, signed that lease, and don't worry about it. You can't do that. Now, we, this is one of many things we're trying to clean up. But I'm very proud, and I'll echo with Mr. Hawkins and and Mr. Bloom, of this commission, the commitment to serve the public and to follow the law and do the right thing and work together. Uh, you know, I I am, I'd never want to see, and there are those that want to go back the old way. They want to go back the old way because there was a clique, a nice little group that got whatever they wanted. But since I've been here, I've thought that everything be open. And uh I know the other commissioners have joined with me, Commissioner Hawkins, Commissioner Bloom, Commissioner Baratolo. We all worked very, very hard to make it open, we follow the law, we do it properly, we make the decisions in here the way it's supposed to be, the way the constitution is set up. But they made that whole move with consulting one commissioner and without, without any discussion, without any report, anything done here, yet they were spending our county taxpayer money on the voice of one commissioner. Makes me angry, but I I move that we uh sign the lease.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I I just wanna add, I agree with uh Commissioner Callen. I I I voted for it, but I am adamantly opposed to how we got to this situation, and that's all I'll say. Great, okay, reports from elected officials, are there any elected officials? Mayor?
Hey.
How are you doing today?
Uh, the only thing I have, I want to thank you guys again for the grab, we haven't had a spread yet because of the weather guy. But uh, everything went pretty smooth.
I told him to give you some crush, but we weren't gonna give you the run, you couldn't do the run.
Well, they brought a crush, first three trucks, and then they brought the run on the next one. And I, and I tried your tip, but my wife didn't work. If you have other ideas, I'd be welcome, open to it.
Well, she probably watched, she probably watched it here, you're gonna have to wait till it sort of goes out.
Oh, no, she doesn't know anything about that. Don't tell her if she calls.
What's her number again?
Uh, three, four, five, I can't remember, I got my phone.
T R O U B L A, Trump.
Absolutely, that's me, that's what she calls me.
Well, thank you, and again, we also wanna thank you for helping us out with the recycling. I think clearly, he even offered, I want you to know that he was willing to offer his spot for the thirty ton trucks if we couldn't find another place. So I mean, it's just another option to consider, but we were concerned that the traffic getting in and out, but at least we have another option in case something happens. Uh, Walmart is very pleased, I can just say that their business increased. They said they're very happy with it down.
I would be remiss to leave without mentioning Diane, your hair looks.
Wait a minute, Mayor. I like, I like to thank the mayor too for helping us move all those bins from down at the old, or at the recycling spot, it moved them all up to our spot in the backyard. And they're all gone now, but I would say thanks for helping.
We would pay for it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Any other elected officials? Seeing none, how about the?
Sheriff.
Oh, the sheriff, oh, sorry.
You got, you gotta look up.
You know, you know, he was staring down at his feet when he said I said none.
Yes.
How beautiful, I get involved with it.
Yeah, I didn't recognize him.
I know the mayor's, Lou, I just wanna uh also have to thank him for something. As you know, the last deputy we hired, Lance Corretta, came from Westover. And we were in a situation where we didn't have a ballistic vest for him yet. We're gonna have our, our vendor come in and measure him. So I called the mayor and asked him if it would be okay if he used the vest he was issued in Westover until we got one. And he said absolutely, well, a few hours later, he called me back and said, look, just tell him to keep it, it's measured for him. Those vests are valued at anywhere between five and seven hundred dollars. So I just wanted to thank the mayor publicly for making that donation uh to that officer because he didn't have one until he got it.
I'm racking up the voice here now.
Okay, I'll get it.
Thank you.
The other thing, uh, I apologize for showing up late, but you know, over the last twelve hours, we've had a lot of things going on. We had a fatality last night on I sixty-eight that uh we're dealing with uh still uh today, and then uh the incident at University High School this morning, but um uh wanted to say that, and I don't know if if you brought it up, okay, about uh today being the third anniversary of Todd May's death, so. Uh, the chief and I and five other deputies are going to be going to Charleston tomorrow because on the house floor, they're gonna be recognizing active injured and killed in the line of duty uh officers tomorrow morning at ten o'clock. And they ask that each county that's had somebody killed in the line of duty or injured in the line of duty uh show up with uh with some of their officers, so we'll be going down for that ceremony uh tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
And um, the only other thing I can echo is what Michael said about the uh interrivable radio project. I'm, I'm very hopeful that that bill that they've submitted goes through and Department of Homeland Security takes over that project because uh there's a lot of opposition to what uh the state police wanted to do and what monies they were gonna go after. And if they didn't get it from nine one one fees, they were gonna come after the end users uh for a user fee. And that would uh heavily impact our department because most agi-, well, I'm sorry, all agencies in Montague County now are on that IRP program. And if they came after all the agencies for a user fee, that could impact our budgets quite severely, so. Uh, so I'm glad we're at least going down that that road, and it looks like it's got some momentum, and I hope that passes, so. Um, what else, anything? That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Any other elected officials? No, okay, any department supervisors? Okay, seeing none, okay, reports from uh the county commissioner, Mr. Hawkins?
Thank you. Uh, in keeping with my former profession, I would like to say this is National Children's Dible Help Month, okay? So uh we don't have to officially recognize it, but uh I still love my profession. Uh, I would also like to invite people to join me uh next, not this Friday, but Friday week, Handbaking and Egg Seal, we've already mentioned four H and FFA, is going to be Friday at Ramada Inn. And followed immediately on Saturday by the Empty Bowls, which is a great organization, providing uh food for the, you know, for those who need it, the panthers. Uh, and you can then come down to the Star City Marina and watch me jump in for the Polar Plunge. And I'm not, no, I'm not challenging anybody to join me, I'm just inviting the public to come down and join me. Uh, and yes, uh that is me in that blonde wig, in that advertisement that Bowls Rice is now featuring on the Polar Plunge. I gotta call about that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Callen?
I've got, I've got a couple things you wanna bring up. One thing, we've got our uh, our essay contest coming up on us very, very quickly. And I wanna make sure that the commissioners are still in agreement. I know uh Jamie, who was led that and uh and sort of helped put all the together as well as the rest of staff, uh, that uh, well, I think we need to get started, I know you, I know you've been tied up on uh
Recycling.
On recycling thing, but I don't know, uh, but I would still, I would like to do uh the the essay contest. I would like to uh, I would like to to follow the same track we did. Uh, Diane and I was asked to present to the County Commissioners Association last, all this uh as to the way we did the essay contest and and it, that, that report and how we did it spread nationally. It went to the National Association of Calvites, and so it went out, went all over uh, all over the United States, all over the world, really, to the internet as to, to our mark, mock commission, so. Uh, I would, I would like to move that we uh, we uh continue the essay contests as we did last year and uh start moving, moving on it with the plan uh with the same policies and procedures we followed last year.
Although, some of you may not know, paying tribute to my former profession, my first degree was in English literature. Therefore, I'm happy to second any essay contest uh that is being promoted by us.
It's been properly moved in second, I also had that down, and I have great news to tell you that I've already been contacted by two schools to come do presentations. So one school's already ahead, now once, one school found out. So there is a lot of interest this year, so I'm excited, so let's move forward on that. It's been properly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you, anything else?
Yes, uh, I I had mentioned last week or the week before, these weeks with the legislature, these weeks sort of run together. There's no weekends type thing. I mentioned at uh the possibility of of holding a public meeting uh to discuss uh what I call uh the potential for county government reorganization. Uh, now, what I would like to do with the authorization of this commission, I would like to go ahead and complete the presentation, I've done some preliminary research. But in order to, to get the population numbers, to get the district plans, to break out the different, to basically prepare a seminar on county government reorganization. I hate to say five commissioners, because five commissioners sort of ties you into one, when there's a lot of different ways you can reorganize the government, uh the county government at this level. So if if I, uh, if uh the commission is agreeable uh to authorize me to, like, I need to work with Mike Paul and get some, some numbers. I'm gonna need to work with the clerk and get some numbers, I need to work with the other staff to ask them to do special things on this project. And if the commission would authorize me to begin that preparation with the hopes of, by the end of April sometime in May, be prepared to present for that public meeting. Of course, I will update you and give you your personal presentation before, before the public presentation. Uh, but I I need the commission's authorization to uh ask people for their assistance in this.
Now, I would move that we allow Commissioner Callen to represent us in this endeavor?
Uh, second that, it's been properly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, passes?
Uh, the, the other thing we've, you've already authorized me on, I didn't make it down for the public hearing. Matter of fact, only nine people made it down uh on that smoking ordinance. It's an interesting ordinance uh in, in that they're, they're taking this one health issue and they're pulling it out and they're doing it strictly to take care of people that help finance their, their, the, the, the racetracks and the video lottery. Those, those are the people that help finance their campaign, so it's a very isolated issue, but it looks like it's got traction. It's got me concerned. It's not that I don't believe the county commission can, ha- has the ability to rule on issues. The question is, it is one particular health issue, smoking. There are numerous health issues out there, uh, uh, that, you know, for everything from, from restaurants, training, all these other health issues that the legislature uh has always assigned to the health department and the state health department. That's why the County Commissioners Association is, uh, we find it curious that anything that they see as a political dumping ground, they love to dump on the county commissions so that they can say their hands are clean, oh, it's the county commissions that caused it. And it's, and it's a, it's a weird, it, it, it's, uh, the County Commissioners Association took a position on this that, that this, we, we are opposed to this because, for a number of reasons. Number one is because it is a health issue. Uh, if they want accountability, uh, they need, they need to uh put it in the hands of the legislature. Because the legislature has drawn up very specific parameters of how we could vote. So even though the health department has to make a recommendation, they did not give us any standard, when I read the law, give us any standard of review, which means that our vote would be very arbitrary. And as the law calls arbitrary and capricious, I mean, oh, we, we like this place, so we're gonna exempt them, we don't like this place. There's no standard by which they've adopted it, so, so. So, so the County Commissioners Association position is that, that this needs to be done at a state level. The problem that exists, exists because the inconsistency application of the smoking throughout the state, from one, one county to another. State Health Department needs to make a recommendation and the legislature needs to pass it statewide. I, I mentioned that because they, because I didn't make the, the, the public hearing, but I've told them they are going to have another public meeting audit and I, I will carry, carry that message. If anything else you want me to carry down there when they have that next public meeting, assuming we don't have three foot now. I don't know if there's anything else you want me to add to that?
Personally speaking, being a doctor, I know that every time I've been approached by this, "How do you feel about this?", I've told them, "No smoking, sorry." So my vote for six years will be that. If you toss me out because of that, I'm sorry. But I am firmly against what they're trying to do with this. I, I, I agree wholeheartedly with you. This is a health issue and, you know, you do need code and you do need uniformity, so.
Do you want to add anything, Doc?
No, I, I think, I mean, we've already dealt with this situation. I think you're opening up literally a can of worms on all issues and I think we have enough. I, I find that ironic that they don't give us the ability to do that, that they won't give us home rule. So, I mean, now, my argument is fine. If you're going to give us that and also give us home rule, but that'll never...
Well, it's just a dumping ground. And what are they going to, you know, I said if they're really saying that the Health Department needs to be more accountable, then every time they, they close down a restaurant, that restaurant ought to be able to appeal to us and we decide whether we open or close it, whether they get a license or not. We ought to decide whether, whether kids get certain immunizations or not. We have to decide that. You know, why one? Well, one, because it's a political dumping ground. So that, that, that's my message. That's really all I have today.
Okay, I have two issues, one quick. It is somewhat sad and ironic that on a day that we're honoring the anniversary of the death of Todd May and the situation that just happened at University High School, that we have to deal with security in this building. But I think it's, it's unfortunate that things have changed and as was seen today at University High School, that, you know, a plan had to be put in place and hopefully we will never have to do that at any other school or here. The other thing is Natalie out there, I just wanted to have Natalie come since it involved her. Yeah. Thank you. And the other thing I wanted to say, and you, that's all right. You stayed for the meeting, so I wanted to explain to the public. Last week, we spent a couple hours negotiating, not negotiate, discussing passionately concerns of security. And I, I want on the record to thank Natalie for her persistence. I don't always agree with her argument, but I mean, she was very clear and passionate representing the attorneys as we were very clear in representing the employees. And it was a long two hours, but I think out of that came positive result. I think we're going to move forward on it and I, I wanted to thank you because first you stayed for the meeting, so I appreciate you even doing that. But I did want to thank you and hopefully this will clear up any concerns or problems. And if we come up with something, then we will see. I think things might change, not exactly in our agreement, but when I say ninety days, when we start to move and separate into the new building. So I don't know what that's going to mean, but I think that we'll, we'll look at it. And that's why, you know, we, we did a ninety day because that's until June first roughly and that gives us thirty days before we move it. But again, I want to thank you. I don't know if you wanted to say anything else. This gets, yeah.
I, I appreciate the consideration of the commission and I appreciate that we can count on the commission to look out for the best interests of the attorneys and the community in this. And our agreement, I believe, is clearly in the best interest of everybody. I'm glad that we were able to make that consistent with the new policy that you have in place and we're willing to continue to work with you for everybody's best interest.
Thank you very much. With that, I ask for, oh, hold on, we have another item.
A new announcement. Friday, February twentieth is the last day of the board review.
Yes.
And if anyone's planning to appear in October, they need to have their applications complete and in here by the twentieth.
We'd appreciate then if you could get that in there. The February twentieth is the deadline. If they, if they want to come before the board of review or the Board of Assessments in October, that request must be in our office before the closing business on February twentieth.
Right.
Well, I'd say by, you have appointments scheduled through twelve and then you'll be adjourned Sunday night, so I would recommend maybe...
By twelve o'clock.
On Friday, the twentieth.
Yeah.
Oh, well, yeah. Well, I guess the October request would be later, but noon is probably a better suggestion.
Right.
By noon on Friday.
Because you'll be adjourned Sunday night.
Right.
Right, thank you.
Okay. With that, is there a move for adjournment?
Move to adjourn second.
Proper move in the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes. We're adjourned.